Good evening. Today is Monday, December 7th, 2020. This is the Westwood Select Board. The time is now 5:00 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020 Emergency Order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation by the Select Board. Going to move on to the Chairman's Update. I would just remind everybody of winter parking restrictions, starting on December 1st through March 31st, there was a town-wide overnight parking ban from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM. The Public Works Assistant Director or the Chief of Police, for the purpose of removing or plowing snow or removing ice from any way, may remove or cause to remove any vehicle interfering with such work. This is pursuant to Section 380-11 of the Town's Bylaws. Snow clearing and clearing of hydrants, we'd ask that residents do not throw or place any snow or ice on any town street, sidewalk, or on top of hydrants, as this can create a hazardous condition or public safety concern. Pursuant to Section 355-5 of the Town's Bylaw, there is a penalty of $50. A written warning for the first offense, $50 for the second offense, and $100 for the third in each subsequent offense. And I would just ask residents to please pay attention to our fire hydrants and clear when possible. More information, nothing damaged by the town that is constructed, built, or placed on the town layout will be repaired or replaced, including mailboxes, fences, stone walls. And the DPW would really ask that all residents remove the basketball hoops from the roadways. More, there are 2,200 catch bases throughout town. It's impossible for the DPW alone to keep this clear of snow and debris. So we would again ask that residents just keep their eye on those drains and help them clear from the roads. So let's hope they're not utilizing this information much this winter, but please keep all of that in mind. That is it for the Chairman's Update. I would just take note that this past Friday, we turned the lights on in front of Town Hall. The Town Hall staff did a great job. We were unfortunately not able to gather and do this, but the lights look great. We want to thank the staff who got that accomplished. We're going to move on at this time, and Mrs. Hyde will recuse herself from the first action.
Thank you.
Hey, John Walsh, it's leaving. I just wanted to say that some of the residents had asked about lighting up the teleph-- the streetlights. And we had discussed that, but unfortunately, there is no power to the streetlights, so we couldn't do that. So I just wanted to be clear for those that are watching, who had asked about electric lights this season. The telephone poles are not wired, or the streetlights are not wired to add Christmas lights to them. Just wanted to be clear on that.
No, it's a good point. Thank you for raising that. I just want to welcome to this conversation Mr. Dean Green from the Green Company. Dean, do you want to just introduce yourself, and then I'll introduce the issue?
Sure. I'm President of the Green Company, and we're developing the homes at 45. And we're here before you, as John, I'll let you do in detail, but of our affordable housing and how we're going to bring that online, how we would like to bring that online with your blessing.
And Sarah Bushard, our Housing Agent, is here. And Sarah, I know you've come before us so many times. We've tried to get this done for you, and I had to miss the last meeting. I apologize. So basically, Sarah, this is the local action agreement that brings on two affordable units and a slight deviation from our original plan, some of which I was part of advocating for. The revised plan allows for greater geographical diversity of these two homes, and we'll bring one of the homes on sooner than originally planned. There's a slight deviation in square footage. I think those are the headlines. Am I missing a whole lot from that?
No, that's, that's correct. So the local action unit application was already reviewed by this board and approved. DHCD also approved it. Mr. Green had proposed a slight change in the unit selection for these two affordable homes. And you hit all those points. The only significant note I would, I would make there is that one of the floor plans, it's not only just different in size, it's a little bit smaller. But I still think it represents the diversity and distribution that, that the town should be looking for when reviewing these kinds of requests.
Yeah, and I think for me, the trade-off is getting it online sooner.
Yeah.
But I'll leave it there. Michael, do you have anything for Mr. Green or Sarah?
No, I don't think so. John, I read through it. It's pretty straightforward. I mean, we've already approved it before, except for this little deviation side.
And then I guess the only other just technical issue, Sarah, that Tish pointed out is to me earlier, I would sign it, and I think the previous document had Mrs. Hyde's signature.
Correct. So I forwarded the, the updated LEU application to Tish, so that's the one that would need to be signed.
Okay. That just represents who was chair at the time of the initiation.
Correct. Yeah.
So I'm okay, Michael, if you're okay, if you want to make a motion.
I am. I'm ready. So I, I moved that the Select Board authorized the Select Board Chair to sign the amended local action unit application for the homes at 45, two affordable housing units located at the former Westwood Lodge property at 45 Platform 3th Street, or submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for approval. Also, okay, I'll stay up. Mr. Ern, can we do them together?
Yes.
Okay. I also moved that we authorize the Select Board Chair to execute the regulatory agreement after the Department of Housing and Community Development approves the local action unit application, pending no further changes to either document.
Thank you. I'll second that, and then I will call off the roll. Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So that is two affirmative votes. Thank you, Mr. Green. Place looks great. I hope the project's going well.
It is going well, and I wanted to thank everyone from the town. It really, well, everyone's been very strict in enforcing the regulations, which is what you want. They have been very fair and wonderful to work with, and I hope we're living up to everybody's standards.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you tonight for tonight, too.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Sarah, same to you.
Connor, you want to bring back Mrs. Hyde?
She should be already in.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm back.
Welcome back. Okay, we're going to move on to the Norfolk Golf Club Change of Officers. Want to, want to just give a brief highlights, Nora?
Sure. So this comes to you every year. Norfolk Golf Club changes its officers for 2021. The following have been appointed Edward McNally as President, David O'Leary as Vice President, Michael Murphy as Treasurer, and Lorraine Beaumont as Secretary. Chris Collins and Rich Hunter were both elected to three-year terms as members of the Board of Governors. So the Alcohol Review Committee reviewed this application, and they're unanimously recommending approval.
Great. I don't have any issues. Nancy or Michael?
No, this is pretty standard.
Reform.
I move that we grant approval for the proposed change of officers for the Norfolk Golf Club for the 2021 license year, pending approval from the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you. Nora, the next one is Schulte Catering. I feel like they're on every other agenda. What's going on?
I think--
Actually, John, Norfolk Golf--
Another Norfolk.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
One more. All right. So on that one, this is something the Norfolk Golf Club has, has requested for several years in a row now. They used to do a single brunch, and it was so popular, they now do two sittings. And so they're requesting an extension of their hours of alcohol service for one day, Mother's Day, to start at 10:00 AM. That's on Sunday, May 9th, 2021.
So I guess even with the current restrictions imposed by the state, they'll, they'll plan this?
So I think they're planning it, and they'll see, they'll wait to see what happens. And, you know, it could end up being an event on their patio. It could be inside. We, I don't think we know that yet. I think we can expect them to come back. But usually, this request is made at the time of license renewal, so they're just making-- at this time, and, and all of their activities are subject to whatever's permitted under the state of emergency. So this also was reviewed by the Alcohol Review Committee, and they recommended unanimously for approval.
Okay. I'm good, then.
Something doesn't feel right about this. I, I know they do it as standard timing and plan well in advance, but it feels very strange to give even a contingent approval. And I suppose we can do it. I just, I really want to be sure that it is reflected as that if-- I really don't want them even coming close to cutting any corners or hosting, or feeling they can host something because they've received this kind of approval.
Would you like to make another condition on it, that they have to come back to the Board of Selectmen prior to May 9th to make sure they've concluded that it's safe?
Or maybe to report how they're doing it.
But I was going to suggest that maybe there's a sign-off by, by the Health Director.
That's one way, or it could be Chris. It goes back to Chris.
Chris, what do you suggest?
Well, we could certainly have our review reviewed, or primarily have Jared review it. And then if the board inclines, inclined, I can certainly sign off on that after I hear from Jared. I mean, we, we will know, I mean, they're going to have to adhere to the COVID, whatever it is for COVID at that time, Jared's going to have to enforce that regardless. So I understand what, I understand what Mrs. Hyde is saying, but we can, we can certainly have the Health Director investigate prior to the event and then provide a recommendation, and I can sign off on that.
Might I recommend a, make a recommendation that you approve it contingent upon approval of the local, local Health Director for safety features at, at the time of the, the launch?
Yeah, I just want to phrase it, there's a possibility that it can't be held. And that, that's the part I want to have clear. It's not how to do it. It's the possibility of the COVID restrictions precluding it from happening. I just want to make sure that we understand the spectrum of possibilities, and that we're not approving something to go forward in some shape or form.
I, I agree.
Other subtlety that, I, I don't mind them planning it, and I hope for them that they can host it. But I don't want to be involved in approving something that seems to contradict what we don't know will be in place at that time. It's just an abundance of caution here. So I'll defer to you, John, to tell us--
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I agree with you. It, it does seem odd to me. I mean, I had asked the same question. I think it's a little bit of a sequencing challenge. I think they are looking for us to say yeah, so that they can start planning. I mean, I, I'm fine approving it, subject to a final sign-off by, by the Health Director.
And if that's not provided, then they can't do it.
Right.
You know, there's a possibility it may not even be COVID. Right now, the club's under renovation.
Right. Right. I just, I think to Nora's point, though, I, you know, my understanding is it's been a very successful event. It's been, you know, well-received. It's, it's, so I don't, you know, I, I think I'd rather err on, like, letting them at least plan this. And when they encounter obstacles, you know, precluded from happening, those will be other things. But at least, I feel like what's happening here is they want us to at least acknowledge that they can, you know, vet the issue or do some sort of logistical planning.
Okay. So why don't we do this? I move that the Select Board grant permission to the Norfolk Golf Club for an extension of alcohol service to 10:00 AM on Sunday, May 9th, 2021, for their annual Mother's Day brunch, pending May 2021 state COVID-19 regulations, and reviewed by the Westwood Health Director. I'll just say period on that, and reviewed by the Health Director.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that works. Thank you for doing that. Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. Nora, we're onto Schulte.
Right, now Schulte. So Schulte is applying for another change of manager. Schulte actually took over the Courtyard Marriott, the last time, this was before you. There was a prior owner. And they kept the existing manager in place during the transition. And now they're fully through the transition and have hired a new manager. His name is Michael Guzzi. He is going to be the Manager of Record at the Westwood Courtyard. He was previously employed in Massachusetts as a manager of the Residence Inn in Marlborough, and before that, the Courtyard Marriott in Brookline. But most recently, he was the General Manager of the Normandy, Normandy Hotel in Washington, DC. Everything has been submitted that needs to be. He, there was a successful quarry review, and the Alcohol Review Committee did review this, and again, voted unanimously to recommend approval pending favorable reference checks by the licensing agent. So those rest, reference checks are in process now. Let me just check. I did just get an email from Karen Flynn, our licensing agent. And I just want to see if she has heard anything more on the reference checks. Just one second. No, I don't have anything more on that.
I'm okay. Any concerns?
Yep.
I move that the Select Board grant approval to the change of manager of record at Schulte Catering Westwood LLC, doing business as Courtyard Marriott, Courtyard, Boston, Dedham, Westwood, from Susan Langford to Michael Guzzi, pending Alcohol Beverages Control Commission approval, and a favorable reference check from the Westwood Licensing Agent.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you. Nora, you have two on Del Frisco's.
First, Anthony's.
I'm sorry. I don't know what's wrong.
There's a long list here. You're trying to get--
It's been a long day. It's been a long day. I'm sorry.
So Anthony's is another request for a change of manager. The new proposed manager is Mark Rahal. He would be the Manager of Record for the Westwood Anthony's. He began his career with another Anthony's in Natick, and was also employed as a General Manager of the Bluestone Lane Restaurant in Boston. And that was his most recent job before going to Anthony's in Westwood in 2020. So this has also been reviewed. There's been a successful quarry, quarry review, and the Alcohol Review Committee has recommended unanimously in favor of this one. In this case, the reference checks have, have panned out.
And did you say he worked in the Westwood one before?
No, he, he's, he's in the West one, one currently, so he--
Oh, I got it. Okay, sorry.
And I think we have both Mark and Attorney Devlin with us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you for joining us. In addition to what Nora just laid out for us, is there anything you need to add? Mark, do you want to just introduce yourself?
I think she did a great job.
Yeah, my name is Mark Rahal, and I'm the General Manager with Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza in Westwood. I did start my career at the Westwood location, and I did move to the Natick store, opening them up.
Thank you for joining us. I, I don't, I don't have any concerns, Nancy or Michael.
No. I move the Select Board grant approval to the change of manager of record at Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza from Michael Dansek to Mark Rahal, pending Alcohol Beverages Control Commission approval.
Michael, you're on mute.
He's frozen.
I think he's frozen.
Say again?
Second.
Okay, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh? Thank you both. Thank you. Hi, Mr. Devlin, for joining us.
So then now we get to the two--
Thank you, Mark.
The two Del Frisco ones, and Mr. Devlin will help us with those two. So this is a little bit more complicated, two-stage transaction. So why don't I turn it over to Joe?
Yes, thank you very much, Nora. And this is the first part of that transaction. I represent a company called El Catterton, which is an SEC-registered investment advisor that has a number, I think they're up to 10 equity funds, and they mostly invest and purchase in the consumer brands area, including restaurants. They merged with Del Frisco's Restaurant Group, which was the publicly traded owner of, obviously, the Del Frisco's. But there was another number of other concepts, something called the Barcelona Wine Bar and the Bar Taco restaurant chains, among others. El Catterton specializes in those types of, purchasing those types of chains, like Barcelona Wine Bar or Bar Taco, which are small, unique places that need their expertise and funding to grow into bigger chains. So that really was the target of this purchase. It was reviewed and vetted and investigated by the SEC and approved by them. But it's a merger, so all the other restaurant concepts came with it, including the high-end steak houses that most of us are familiar with, for Del Frisco's, one of which is in Westwood and two in Boston. So El Catterton found a, a more appropriate buyer, or, you know, which is this Landry's Restaurant Group, which you'll hear from Attorney Upton afterwards. I have represented them for a number of years, but I didn't feel it was right to represent them both in, in this transaction, although I'm not on the transactional side of it. So Mr. Upton will fill you in, but from, Landry's is a big upscale steakhouse restaurant chain in the South. But over the last eight years or so, they've been buying up the types of places like Del Frisco's. They own Morton's, they own McCormick and Schmicks, they own a couple of other concepts, steakhouse concepts like that, that, that aren't here in our area. They also own Mastro's, which is a high-end seafood and steakhouse in, in Boston, and it's a chain across the, the US as well. It's owned by one guy who is the largest rest, single individual restaurant owner in, in the world, and he owns the Houston Rockets, a guy by the name of Tillman Fertitta. So they're much more, you know, the high-end steak houses don't have a big growth potential. You know, they're a little more staid and, and require a little more finesse to run them and with somebody with expertise. In, in the end, I'm going to kind of repeat what I've said in Westwood before. This absolutely means nothing to the concept or the change in the operational location in Westwood or the two in Boston. The General Manager is the same person, the personnel is the same person, the menu is the same person, the premises is the same person, and you shouldn't expect the Morton's that, that, you know, that they've purchased haven't changed in Boston either, so. It, so it's really, you know, buying up of similar steak houses by this Landry's. This transaction, there's three left that are operating in, in Massachusetts. Two are in Boston, which were, the Boston Licensing Board has approved. There were 73 other Del Frisco's in 16 other states, and there was 38 or 42, I think there was 38 plus four that hadn't opened yet, Barcelona Wine Bars and Bar Taco. So it was a pretty big, big transaction. And I'm here to answer any questions I have. I hope our holding of this is short-lived, and in fact, like five minutes until Andrew comes on, but I can answer any questions you might have.
Nora, any concerns or issues?
No, I don't. This is reviewed by the Alcohol Review Commission, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval. Note that this is a public hearing, so I don't know if there's any attendees that--
Right.
--like to speak to it.
I have questions first.
Any questions for the board?
Yeah. Joe, I'm curious what prompts the sale in the first place, anything COVID-related? And my second question relates to if we were to ever have issues, which I hope we don't, who comes before us besides the local manager? Because I know previously it was important to have the face-to-face contact. So are we, is this leading towards an entity that we don't ever see as owners, or what can we expect? So two parts to that.
I, I think it's the same as any other chain, and I didn't get into much more detail beyond that. My, my client, El Catterton, is going to be out of it, and--
Right.
--would have seen them anyway. You're not going to see Mr. Fertiti either. What these chains have is area directors that manage, like, 12 of the, the Del Frisco's in the, you know, New England area, and, and that person, I don't know off the top of my head, but that person probably hasn't changed either.
It's kind of a regional management.
Yeah, and they do have, the good thing about Landry's, and, and again, I, I kind of pushing into Mr. Upton's, Attorney Upton's turf, but they have the same officers. They have one owner, Stephen Scheinthal, Tillman Fertitta, and I'm blanking on the third person's name. But it's been the same people since I've been representing them for probably 10 years. They have a good compliance department that Nora will get to know, and this Lisa Burgess, and Melissa Turner, and Nola Hernandez. I mean, I, these people have been there for 10 years as well. So in that respect, it's a little bit like Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza. You'll see these regional people and the compliance people, and ultimately, the, the one stockholder is responsible to you all.
Yeah, but again, what kind of motivated all this? Any sense or anything you can share?
It wasn't COVID-related. I actually think it probably had something to do with the steaming hot economy right before that. And then I was working on a number of purchases like this, and then COVID shut everything down. I mean, I, Landry's, there were actually people that, you know, because I represent them on some other restaurants. They, they stayed, but like, some of the hotels I represent, some of the restaurant chains, I-- Anthony's is a good example, that several people that I was talking to there, it's now the Senior Vice President who is in charge of that. He's pretty much doing everything. So they're leaning on us until they can get these people back from, from furlough.
I'm just wondering, John, if it makes sense to hear part two before we take any action.
Well, right, I was going to suggest, it's a, Connor, I think Andrew Upton is an attendee.
Yep, I am promoting him to panelist right now.
That's perfect.
And he should be in now.
Mr. Upton?
Good evening.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
I don't know, did we, did you hear the conversation prior?
I did, and Attorney Devlin and I did this same tandem approach in Boston last week. He gave a fairly comprehensive coverage of the transaction. This is typical in the restaurant industry, where a giant corporation buys up restaurants and then sells off another batch of them to someone else. This is a, Joe gave you a lot of detail on the transaction. The only thing I can really add is the total price of this deal was about $323 million. There were 73 Del Frisco's, and most importantly, no aspect of the operation at the license premise in Westwood or in any Del Frisco's in Massachusetts is changing whatsoever. So it's really just a corporate transaction at the top, and the ABCC requires these filings. But the operation, the stake, the service, the people that you saw last week will be the same as you see next week.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. I'm ready for a motion, Michael, unless you have anything.
Did you, did you want to go through any public questions, just in case? Not seeing--
Are there any questions from the public? Connor, I'm not seeing any of you.
Nor am I. I have not seen anybody raise their hand to speak. If people want to, they can, they have that feature at the bottom of their screen, or they can type in the Q and A chat, but I have not seen anybody yet do that.
Okay. All right, so two-step process here. First, I move the Select Board grant approval for the change of ownership application of Del Frisco's Grill of Massachusetts LLC, doing business as Del Frisco's Grill, to El Catterton, a private equity firm, all pending Alcohol Beverages Control Commission approval.
I'll second.
Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I as well.
I move that the Select Board grant approval for the change of ownership application of Del Frisco's Grill of Massachusetts LLC, doing business as Del Frisco's Grill, from El Catterton to Landry's LLC, Fertitta Entertainment, Inc., pending Alcohol Beverages Control Commission approval.
I'll second.
It's a separate agenda item, so I will ask if there's any public comment or questions. I'm not seeing any. Okay, we have a second. We'll call. Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So thank you, John, for joining us.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
See you all safe and happy and healthy.
Take care.
Bye.
Right, Nora, I'm going to try really hard to go to the next one correctly.
All right. All right. Well, the next one is a request for extension of outdoor seat areas. You may recall that in June, the governor passed an order that allowing local licensing authorities to grant temporary relief through November 1st to restaurants that have alcohol licenses. And the board chose to grant relief to Kiara and Toast Office, as well as to BB's, which simply operates under a CB license, to have outdoor seating on premises and parking spaces. And then we came back to, it was after the governor passed Order Number 50. I think it was in October, not, it could have been September. It was in September. We came back and asked-- Not, it could have been September. It was in September. We came back and asked that you extend that from November first to the end of the year in accordance with the governor's later order. And so now what we're asking, since there'll be new licenses that'll be considered by the board, the extension through the thirty-first was on the old license. We're asking you to do the same thing on the new licenses in accordance with the governor's order number, COVID-nineteen order number fifty, that allows this authority of the local government without getting permission from the ABCC to extend these premises to outside areas through up to sixty days past, just check the label here, sixty days after the end of the state of emergency. So we're asking you to grant a blanket approval for these three restaurants that you've already granted for their new license to allow the extended outside area until sixty days past the end of the state of emergency.
Which is December thirty-first.
Well, sixty, we don't know what the end of it is yet, so the state of emergency is unending as of now. The governor will actually declare an end to it when that comes, so we don't know when that'll be. The reason that we had asked in your last motion to have it only go through December thirty-first was because that was the duration of the licenses that we were granting the extended area to. So now that there'll be new licenses that will run through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, yet the governor's order only allows this special outdoor area through sixty days past the end of emergency, state of emergency. We're asking you to make your new licenses contingent to that same approval. So I think you could either do that as requested here in a motion if you choose to as a whole, or you could do it on each of the licenses that have this outside area as those licenses come up for renewal.
I think what's hard is that is the unknown of when the state of emergency will end. There's just.
What if we did it terminus with the state of emergency? Because one of my thoughts is, we might want to continue to allow this in some form. Maybe they have to come back and talk to us.
So after this, after the state of emergency ends, you have another hurdle to jump through because we're using parking spaces for these so that they would have to then be compliant with zoning, and they would need planning board approval as well. So planning board certainly and possibly even zoning board of appeals. So they don't need those right now, as long as the state of emergency is in place. But if you don't want to go sixty days past the state of emergency, you could go through the end of the state of emergency. I think that the reason order fifty is written with that extra time is to give restaurants time to recover and prepare and move into their new mode.
Right, because there's no guarantee that they'll be noticed to the ending of the state of emergency.
Right, right.
He could conceivably end the state of emergency within a seven-day period, and then they'd be caught in limbo. This gives you sixty days to work with it.
I guess, Nora, I guess my question is, if there are any establishments right now that don't have outdoor seating, they have to come to us no matter what, right?
They do. So this would only apply to Kiara's, Toast Office, and BB's because they already have come to you, and you've already granted them the special outdoor seating.
Okay, so I'm good with that, as long as we have that check of other establishments needing to come forward.
So the Alcohol Review Committee met on this and also wanted to make sure that you understood that any kind of heating device be properly inspected by the building department and the fire department to make sure that it's safely operated.
Are we doing that now? Are we doing that now?
Yeah, it's tough to sit outside in December, January, or February without some help.
So I believe Kiara's has outdoor heating, and they have their cool for those. I don't, I actually don't know if the other two have applied for outdoor heating or not.
Right, so Pat, I guess, I guess they have to seek permission for those outdoor heaters regardless, right?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I think, you know, with this weather that goes up and down, we may have some good stretches of weather or people sitting outside, so I don't want to. I think, I think the fear is that I don't want to leave these restaurants high and dry if there's a short period of time at the cessation of the
I think you're right on that, John.
Emergency.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand what happened. I think we can't just extend it arbitrarily once the state of emergency is over. I know it has to go back for approvals. This was special allowance that we adopted, and I think that's the right thing, and I think we want to continue to provide that. I just wanted to have this discussion.
No, I agree.
Also have to understand that the ABC has kind of abdicated their responsibility about outdoor seating to you as a local authority. When the state of emergency ends, that's probably going to end as well at some point in time.
Yeah.
And so a sixty-day period should be able to have the restaurants go through proper channels to extend that outside seating if they so wish.
I think we have bigger problems for the restaurants, and that is their ability to have indoor seating and how long that lasts and or in what form it lasts. So I think we still want to help them. I know this board has wanted to help them, and I don't see that changing.
And they very much appreciate that. I've heard from all of them how much they appreciated the board's willingness to let them have the outdoor seating and then extend it through the end of the year. And now this further extension, I'm sure, will be appreciated for those few warm days they may get. They'll have an opportunity to see people outside.
They're doing a great job, so.
Michael, anything? You good?
I move the select board extend the temporary outdoor seating approvals for Kiara, BB's Cafe, and the Toast Office to expire sixty days after the end of the state of emergency on their twenty-twenty-one licenses, pending appropriate permits and inspections by the various town departments.
I'll second.
Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Thank you both. Connor, can you upgrade Abby to a panelist?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're on to all twenty-twenty-one, all license renewals, CV, on-premise alcohol, and off-premise alcohol.
Right, so this is our omnibus article that we bring before you every December, looking to renew all the licenses we have. So common vitler licenses, on-premise alcohol, off-premise alcohol, entertainment, class one and class two automobile dealers, junk dealers, livery taxi, and unattended donation containers. So I'll just point out a couple of these that are special cases, and then we can just go through the whole list. The two special seasonal businesses are Bubbling Brook and Lifetime Outdoor Bistro. So on those instances, you're asked to grant approval subject to their successful inspections, which will not be done until the spring. All of the other businesses have their inspections complete, except for two taxi cabs. So those I will also ask that if you grant approval for the new licenses for these two taxi cabs, you make those subject to inspections of the vehicles, which have not yet been sent for approval. So would you like me to read through the list of all the licenses?
I think so. That's what we typically do.
No.
No, don't we typically? No?
We need to for the approvals. We need to in some form, but we need to streamline it as best we can.
All right.
I have a question before you do. Under the taxi company licenses, at least in our materials, American Norfolk Taxi said pending inspection, and Norfolk Town Taxi says pending reinspection. Can you, is that a distinction without a difference?
I think it is, and it may be that they, I don't actually know conclusively, but it may be that American Norfolk is a new vehicle, and Norfolk Town Taxi is
That's what I was wondering. But they still, they had the licenses before. It's a renewal for the company.
Yes. Cars inspected, and they may have, they may have a car that hasn't been inspected before. I could tell you also that there were five additional taxi licenses. Three of them have been in contact with the licensing agency and have indicated that they are interested in renewing, but they're going to take advantage of the extension that you gave them and wait until spring and see how they're doing then. So those three companies took their vehicles off the road, ceased having insurance, and so they're not eligible to apply at this time. There are two others of the five ones that licensed in previous years have not returned calls, have not contacted the licensing agent. And in fact, one of those two, the emails come back and the phone number's been disconnected, so that
It probably stopped service, yeah.
And it's not, there were some, you know, we seem to have had many more taxi companies than there was existing taxi business.
Yeah. Can I ask a question of town council?
Yes.
Can we just go through this where we say we have a list and we move and do it in buckets? So we do the common vic licenses and then the all alcohol and just say as referred to in our document and that following to the minutes? Or do we need to say every business name?
Well, I think you can call it by category.
That's what I suggested.
I think you can call it by category and ask if anyone has a hold in that specific category, if you want to do it that way.
How about that, John?
No, no, I'm fine. My memory was that we read them all, but you know.
Well, that's my memory as well, but
The list is getting, the list has gotten longer and
Well, I can't even read a straight line tonight, so don't worry about me.
The long one is the common
No, I'm okay. We'll just say what page it's referenced on or, you know, how it's referenced.
Yeah, just do the categories. The common vic twenty-six, less Bubbling Brook and Lifetime Bistro, and we'll just go down in buckets, like I said.
The Bubbling Brook and Lifetime Bistro, we're still asking for their approval, just subject, those two would be subject to
We can peel them off.
Yeah. Okay, I'm fine with that.
So you have to take the lead, though, and say any question, any holds on any of these, and then I'll do a motion if there are none. How about that?
Fair enough.
So you, John.
Are there any holds on anything listed in our packet?
Common vic license, do that one first.
Common vic license.
Common vic for the license. I don't have any.
Okay, so I move, we, I'm going to, we approve the renewal of the common vic licenses for the twenty-twenty-one calendar year pending appropriate public safety inspections and ABCC approval. And further that the Bubbling Brook and Lifetime Bistro licenses will be pending spring twenty-twenty-one inspections. Does that cover it?
I believe it does.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
This is more work than if we had read them, right? Sorry.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
I vote I as well. Okay, on to the next category.
So that represents a unanimous vote, Mr. Chairman?
It does.
Thank you.
The next is the on-premises CV all alcohol licenses, of which you have nine.
Okay, any holds from the board?
I'm just going to ask a general question. Any issues during the course of the pandemic that have arisen that we should be aware of? That may not have come to our attention?
No issues.
Everything's fine.
Okay.
That's it. I move that we approve the license renewals for the nine on-premise CV all alcohol licenses. Are there any pending approvals on that, Nora, the same ABCC? Is it?
Same, that's subject to ABCC approval.
Okay, so the approval is subject to ABCC approval. That's the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission and public safety inspections.
I'll second. Sure, John. I don't want to step on your toes.
Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
I vote I as well. That is a unanimous vote, Mr. Hearn.
And now we have the on-premise CV wine and malt beverage licenses, and there are three of those.
I have no issues with any of them.
Okay, I move that we approve the license renewals for the on-premise CV wine and malt beverage licenses, subject to appropriate inspections and ABCC approval.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Thank you. Next, Nora?
Next is the off-premises wine and malt beverage, and there are four of those.
And we've had no issues.
No issues.
Okay, any, any trouble from the board, any problems with the board, any holds?
No. I move that we approve the license renewals for the off-premises wine and malt licenses, subject to appropriate inspections and ABCC approval.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
And I vote I as well.
Thank you. Next, entertainment licenses. We have twelve of those. And those are local approval only, not ABCC.
That's what I was going to ask, yeah.
I have no issues.
No, okay, so
I have a question. So Nora, I've been in Costa Loca, so I'm wondering why you have an entertainment license? I don't have any TV. Just audio?
Audio, piped to music, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I move that we approve the license renewals for the entertainment licenses, subject to town inspections only.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
And I vote I as well.
Right, next we have taxi company licenses. There are three of these, and two of them are still pending inspections.
Okay, I think we've heard about these. So I move we approve the license renewals for the three taxi company licenses before us tonight with two also pending either inspection or reinspection of the associated vehicles to those companies.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
I vote I as well.
All right, thank you. The next is one, one livery license for Boston Carriage.
That was the new one from last year, correct?
Yes, yes, that came in midway through the year.
Okay, I move approval of the livery license for Boston Carriage, subject to appropriate inspections.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
I vote I as well.
Thank you. We have two junk dealer licenses.
I love the title. What, is it the GameStop is one of them?
GameStop and Albany Jewelers.
Okay.
So it's for resale. It's for sale of items, estate jewelry or
Kind of like free cash.
Free cash, yes.
Junk.
Junk dealer. It's the wrong name, but we get
Yeah.
I move approval of the two junk dealer licenses. There's, are there any inspections on those, Nora? I can't imagine.
I don't believe there are.
I'll say just in case, but subject to any necessary inspections, just in case.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
I vote I as well.
Next, we have the class one auto dealers. We have four of those.
Okay, no issues.
Now, ownership has changed, hasn't it? Oh, no, management had changed.
Management, yeah. Still prime, but the board of prime has changed.
And that doesn't require our approval?
It does not.
Because it's the alcohol licensing that does.
Right, alcohol license, the ABCC is interested in having a new approval every time there's a change in ownership entities. But your licenses, that's not the case, as long as the license holder is the same, the licenses.
Okay, I move approval of the license renewals for the class one auto dealers.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
I as well.
And we have the class two auto dealers. We have just one, the Highline Group.
I move approval of the license renewal for the class two auto dealer, the Highline Group.
I'll second.
Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
I vote I as well. Thank you.
All right, getting near the end. We have the unattended donation containers, and we have three of those in town.
Is the St. Pauli one going to resume?
Hopefully, at the end of the pandemic, the box is still there, but it's closed, so I think that they
Should we wait, or what?
They've, they've applied for renewal.
Okay.
So they've asked for the renewal. I'd recommend granting it, but I think the box will remain closed throughout the pandemic.
Got it.
Nora, is the Baptist church, the temple, and then where's the third?
The Lions Club has an eyeglass donation bin. It's actually in front of the optometrist on High Street.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I move approval of the license renewals for the unattended donation containers.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
And I vote I as well.
Thank you. We're done.
Thank you, Nora. Thank you. Okay, so we're on to the Islington Center redevelopment phase three closing. I know we have attorney Dan Bailey here with us. I know Abby is here with us as well. Thank you for joining us. Nora, Dan, who wants to lead us here? Nora, Dan, who wants to lead us here?
Dan?
Sure. Uh, you know, um, you know, just for the record, special town council, Dan Bailey, uh, speaking on the Islington Land Disposition Agreement, um, I'm here tonight to ask the board uh, to approve a draft deed that I provided to you, uh, for the phase three closing of this project. You'll remember that this was approved two and a half years ago at town meeting, uh, there were three phases to it. Phase one, uh, had to do with the, uh, the Washington Street, Washington School Street side of the, the, the project. Uh, and the rebuild of the, the C V S there that's been completed. Then phase two had to do with the transfer of the municipal parking lot on that side of the street uh, to the town and the transfer of Wentworth Hall to the redeveloper, uh, that was completed back in April. And we're now ready to move on to phase three, which is the transfer of the Islington Community Church parcel, as well as a small piece of the East Street layout. And that's shown on the, uh, plan that I provided to you in, in the package. Uh, all at the corner of Washington Street and East Street, all consistent with the land disposition agreement. That's to be transferred to, uh, uh, Petruzzialo Properties or a related entity. Um, and the town is to be paid two point two million dollars. Yeah, Nora probably should jump in for a little bit of context, yeah.
Just want to clarify one thing on the payment, the two point two million dollars is the total payment for the, the, the entire, uh, sale. So we received four hundred thousand.
That's right.
Closing phase one, four hundred thousand at the closing phase two, so we received one point four million at the closing in phase three for a total of two point two million.
Right, and I, I think this is just, I, I felt like a ministerial matter. I mean, we're just now at the next step in this process that we've been on, this is about approving the deed, so that can be filed, correct, Dan?
Yeah, i- i- it's approving the deed, um, I've got a little bit of a, a more expanded motion. Uh, because as we started digging down into title, we, we see that, you know, there's an old layout, eight East Street layout. Uh, so I want you to authorize the discontinuance of that layout to the extent necessary. You have that authority under the town meeting warrant article, I read it earlier today. Um, so if we have to come back to you sometime in the next couple of weeks and need a, an abandonment or a discontinuance, you voted that and I can just drop it off at the police station and you can sign it.
I'm good.
Do we have that one, Dan?
Uh, I, I have it, you don't have it, I drafted it this afternoon, but I can read it to you.
Okay, we'll do that as a separate motion, so that we can unbundle it from the others, I think would be a good idea.
Okay. Michael, you good for a motion?
No, I, I just, I want to ask, um. Well, first I want to observe that it looks like the, um, rebuild of our library and the addition of the community center space is underway, I saw a lot of activity out there. Um, and I think it just, given this topic, it'd be nice just to hear about that.
Sure, so, so we've been working on that since, um, I think it began last December. Um, and it is in earnest now, we have the third contractor on the site who was hired to do the, um, the general contracting, the, the actual construction, we had a previous contractor who had done the foundation and one before that who had done the excavation. So Tower Construction is our contractor and they began, uh, first week in October. And they started as their initial work to, um, remove the pieces of the old library building on the east side of Washington Street, they panelized those sections and brought them over to the west side of Washington Street, where they're being stored, waiting for the framing to go up for the, the new Wentworth Hall building. Um, they also then followed that up with cutting and capping of the old water and sewer lines for the old library building. And then just this past week, they were having new water and sewer lines installed in the road going to the new Wentworth Hall. They're also working on the elevator footing that, um, needed to be poured. And as soon as that's complete, they're ready to begin the next stages, so we'll see framing go up, um, fairly, fairly quickly. They're also working on, I believe, interior drainage. Um, and that they're expecting to work throughout the winter, if, if they're able to. Um, and right now the completion of construction is expected for early July of twenty twenty one. Um, so in the mean.
We have something in, um, that I read that would have the, um, youth and family services or, or look furnishings or things from the current Islington Community Center going to storage in the lower level of the refurbished C V S building.
Yes, so.
And it said through June thirtieth, and I'm just wondering what happens, now you're saying maybe complete the other one in July, you know, things happen, so what, what happens?
So I believe our licensing agreement with Petruzzialo Properties or Supreme Development, whoever that agreement is with, will be through July fifteenth, so they've agreed to store our materials, that's not much, we're, we're holding on to some library materials boxes, about seventy five boxes of library materials, about ten bins of, um, items for youth and family services and just a few things for the recreation program, things that had, that it wasn't worth moving somewhere else. So they're being stored in the basement of the old C V S building, um, in a, a airtight, watertight area. And they'll just stay there until we're ready to move them into the new building in mid-July.
And what happens if mid-July turns into August one?
We negotiated a thirty day extension on the license.
Okay.
Yeah, and we don't expect that to happen, but if it did, I believe we have, uh, provisions in our contract with Tower Construction that would help us to cover any additional costs. Right now, our storage is free of cost, because it's, Petruzzialo is providing that storage in order to have a sooner, uh, closing, so we're closing or attempting to close on phase three in December. If we, for some reason, we're not able to, our land disposition agreement gives us more time than that, we could close later in the spring and avoid the problem of this, of the temporary storage, but in order to entice us to close sooner, um, in, in a timetable that allows them to begin the work that they need to do to get those, um, get the, the new building up and running as soon as possible, we're agreeing to do that as long as they.
So it's beneficial to both parties, so that works. So I just have to ask, when do we, if we do the December close, which is what is being worked towards right now, when should we all expect to see demolition of the Islington Community Center building?
I think they would file for a demolition application immediately upon closing and they need to, uh, cut and cap utilities, um, remove any hazardous materials that are found in that building and then they would be able to demolish it, they're intending to do that over the winter. The hope is to be in the ground with foundation work for the new building, uh, by early spring.
So it'd be nice to get that kind of information, um, made available, um, maybe through the town postings and other things, just so people are alerted before they actually see.
Yes, we'll, we'll put something in the new Westwood Wire, uh, we have, uh, project updates that we put on the town's website and we'll have a section of the wire that points us to that, we can also ask the, uh, local paper to, to cover it as well.
Yeah, I, uh, thank you, John, I just wanted to have that information shared, I know. Information is, or our actions are, uh, fairly, uh, uh, and they're anticipated and they're ministerial.
No, thank you for raising it.
One other thing I want to point out, we have, um, been told that there's a time capsule that was buried in nineteen sixty seven when the I C C was constructed, so that's one of the things that we're asking the developer as they're, they're working on their, their demolition and site work to dig up that time capsule. And the library is planning an event when the new library opens to open that time capsule and also to create a new time capsule for the new Wentworth Hall.
That's nice, okay. So are, are we good with, I can do what we had before as one motion and then Dan, you can read yours, is it good to do them separate?
Sure, you can do it that way, it's probably the easiest.
Okay. All right, I move the select board, uh, vote in accordance. I'm just reading this, it doesn't really make sense. I move that in accordance with the land disposition agreement between the Town of Westwood and Petruzzialo Properties LLC dated June eleventh, twenty eighteen, as amended, that the select board take the following three actions. One, approve and execute a deed conveying the Islington Community Center parcel to Petruzzialo Properties LLC. Two, to authorize the town administrator to execute all such other closing documents as may be necessary to complete the closing at the direction of town council and special town council. Is that right, it should be both, or is it just a town council?
Yes.
Okay, both. And three, to direct special town council Dan Bailey to hold the deed and other executed documents in escrow until the phase three closing.
Let, can I jump in and just provide a slight amendment on that? Uh, you said approve and execute a deed conveying the Islington Community Center parcel to pursue Petruzzialo Properties LLC or any related entity.
I will amend accordingly my motion.
I'll second.
Hi?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
Okay, so we're on, Dan, now we have a second motion you need?
So I'm gonna move what attorney Bailey is about to say.
Correct. Uh, I move to authorize the abandonment and or discontinuance of any rights and rights of way, easements or other town property rights as necessary to effectuate the land disposition agreement.
As I said.
And Dan, ma- ma- Dan, may I just jump in here, do you authorize the town administrator to sign such documents?
Yes, you can authorize the town administrator to sign such documents, but with the caveat that a title company may ask the select board to actually sign them.
Fair enough.
Okay, so I amend the motion to reflect that we will authorize the town administrator to sign unless the title company requires the select board to do so.
I'll second.
Hey, thank you, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you, Dan and Nora.
Tish, did you get all?
Thank you. She'll be watching the video.
A few times.
Hey. Um, so Chris, the next two items is acceptance of grants, I mean, this is like really good news. Do you want, do you want to just share a little bit about them?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the first one is for the fire department. The Last Call Foundation has awarded the Town of Westwood Fire Department with a grant of five thousand dollars for advanced gear cleaning and inspection of all primary gear in the department. Uh, the department will be able to provide onsite, um, cleaning, uh, to approximately forty members. This will include, uh, helmet, hood, jacket, pants, liners, boots and gloves. We're certainly grateful and much appreciated of, uh, the Last Call Foundation.
And this is going to be ongoing afterwards, after we use the grant?
Yes.
So we'll, so we'll have to pay for it afterwards.
We have to pay for it, I, I think what this money is for is to establish a baseline, that the material is, is in fact safe. Um, so it, it's still good news, you know, it's, um, so Chris, you know, please extend our thanks to Chief Deckers for pursuing it.
Certainly, well, thank you.
You ready for a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I move that, um, the select board accept the firefighters' gear cleaning grant of five thousand dollars awarded to the Westwood Fire Department.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, thank you. And then we have another grant for the police department.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Executive Office of Public Safety and Securities, um, has awarded a grant to the Westwood Police Department in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, this grant will mainly include but not be limited to targeted and varied enforcement such as texting and driving, crosswalk enforcement, um, unmarked radar vehicle patrol and impaired driving.
Great, again, you know, extend, extend our thanks to the chief for pursuing.
Chris, I have a question.
Yes.
These are things that our police department does?
Yes.
So how is the grant money applied, is it for overtime?
It's for additional.
Yeah, okay, so we could deploy in addition to the regular rotation and, and, um, officers on the road, we can augment that and this will cover the time involved. Okay, I just want to be sure, it wasn't, it wasn't stated that way, but I couldn't quite understand how the money could be used otherwise, okay. Uh, I move the select board accept the municipal road safety program grant of twenty thousand dollars awarded to the Westwood Police Department.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
My vote aye as well, thank you both. Um, I believe we are on to release of third quarter capital. And I know I saw Pam here, hi Pam.
Yes, hi, how are you tonight? Uh, so this is to request that the select board approves the third quarter capital release. Um, total capital for F Y twenty one is four point two million dollars. And as is typically each year, most of that was released in the first quarter, uh, three point two million, followed by four hundred fifty four thousand in the second quarter. The request tonight is to release two hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars for a couple of items outlined in your packet, uh, a hundred twenty seven thousand five hundred for municipal and seventy five thousand for schools.
I don't have any issues.
Okay, I move the select board approve the release of the third quarter F Y twenty one capital totaling two hundred two thousand five hundred dollars to the various departments contingent upon all procurement procedures and checklist being fulfilled.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, thank you both. Um, Pam, I know you're gonna talk about the F Y twenty two budget, I think you have a presentation, correct?
I do have a presentation.
Can, can I ask you one question before we begin, so we, you heard us just speak about the, um, money we'll receive from the developer for the I C C, when, when that's received by the town, what, what fund does that go into?
Well, that, um, was part of the vote when that project was approved. So town meeting approved that project to be three, to build the new building, um, to be three point five million dollars authorized borrowing, less any proceeds received. So the three point five was the, um, outermost budget, will take in the two point two and the other pieces received and will borrow for the net amount, so that money helps reduce the borrowing, uh, you know, really, it reduces what the town cost of the new building is.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, I think I can, um, share my presentation, oops. And I will move, uh, quickly through this. Can you see that screen, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so just a quick reminder that at your, you've gone through, uh, several various pieces of financial information at your meetings throughout the fall, looking at how we close out F Y twenty, uh, what's been the COVID financial impact. We talked about F Y twenty one state aid and how that played into the decision to not have to have a fall town meeting. Uh, we looked at our certified free cash amount, talked about the meals and hotel tax revenue, kind of the ongoing COVID and FEMA funding, uh, and then at your meeting in, um, November, you approved the tax classification rate, that split tax rate for commercial and residential, um, and we did have our tax rate approved by Department of Revenue. So now in December and January, we'll really be looking to present with the board and work on the F Y twenty two budget material. Both the operating budget, the capital budgets, um, talking about the overall budget, revenue and expenses. Uh, so really, we'll, we'll continue to do some of the next several meetings, looking towards a February first target where we typically have, um, some proposed budget in place at that point. We, uh, I do just want to start out by saying, obviously, it's a different year for, for all of us trying to budget during the COVID um, situation, um, you know, we talked a lot in your last couple of meetings about how the town meeting has approved structurally sound budgets. Our, our finances are designed to help us maintain essential services during a rainy day scenario. Uh, and we certainly are seeing that this year, we're able to kind of keep our services in place. Um, in the current year, we had conservative budgets in place, again, that importance of having the state level fund F Y twenty one state aid. Just a reminder, we did not use any reserve funds to balance our twenty one budget, we talked about that at one point, we did not need to. Uh, and we did end our year cold, uh, smoothly with F Y twenty. And we have had some very significant cares and FEMA money, so federal and then some federal money passed through the state. And we have had some very significant cares and FEMA money, so federal and then some federal money passed through the state to help with additional COVID um specific impact. And that's particularly for the schools and some of their uh various costs that they've had and our public safety departments. Um, so we've been fortunate to this point um with what we've been able to do. Um, we're still in this period of uncertainty. The cares and FEMA funding authorization does end December 30th. So after that point, we will not have additional funding in place at this point for any of those costs if they're ongoing. Um, at this point, as we start to look ahead and we're budgeting for fiscal 22, which would not begin until next July, we still are in flux uh as far as, you know, what we'll need to do. Um, so it's a bit of a different uh period we're in than normal. Um, but we do need to begin our budget cycle and begin to start talking about some of the pieces. So that's what we're going to go through tonight. Uh, but some of the items that remain open now that will need to uh continue to follow and will be flexible on is, again, as I mentioned, if the cares or FEMA funding continues beyond that December 30th date, uh what might happen with the FY22 state budget? The state has actually not finalized or voted the 21 budget yet. And here we are in December. I believe they'll do that this week. So we do know we will receive at least level funding order state aid, but they've not actually taken action on the 21 budget, never mind looking at the 22. Uh, and then, you know, we're really at a po, a period where we are not sure yet what we will be budgeting for in FY22. Uh, so for example, would the school still be remote learning or some combination and what will be the continued impact on our public safety department? So we're going to start the budget process and so show you some pieces, but there's certainly a lot more uh moving parts than in a typical year. So typically with our overall budget goals, we're looking to maintain uh the quality of services in town, uh looking to maintain our capital investment. Uh, the board has done a great job over the last couple of years of building our base capital up to the level that our financial policies dictate. So it allows for important rollover of uh capital equipment, important maintenance of our buildings. Uh, we look to maintain the progress that we've been making on our reserve accounts and our long-term liabilities, including the OPEB. Um, we'll be starting to discuss how we factor into our budgets, some of the larger capital projects that will be coming forward. Um, the school capital uh project that's being considered, other large projects, uh like the fire station project. And always we're looking to say, how does all of this balance with the tax bill? How does this balance with uh Prop 2 and 1/2? How can we time some of these debt exemption votes that will be going forward? Uh, looking first at the revenue side. So this pie chart is a picture of our current year revenue, FY21 revenue, 105 million dollars with almost 80% of that coming from taxes shown in the blue. Uh, so we primarily uh rely on our tax base as our revenue source, almost 80%, a much smaller reliance, about 6% on state aid uh and then about 6% on our local receipts. So as we look to say, well, what happens to those revenue sources as we look for FY22? This um chart here shows you the actual calculations of our Prop 2 and 1/2 formula. It is very much a formula driven that talks about the maximum amount that a community can raise in taxes without going back uh to their residence to ask for votes. Just a couple of items to point out on here. So we show in FY22, the rightmost column, the, the calculation out of our tax levy. We know um, you know, what would be able to increase under the 2 and 1/2 formulas, what would be available for the board to consider as you look at putting the budget together. Uh, the second column from the right, FY21, just to show the item at the bottom circled. We had uh after our tax rate was certified, we had 825,000 in unused levy. So levy capacity that could have been used in FY21, that was not. Um, and that primarily uh we were able to put aside the university station new tax growth. So 825,000 university station revenue that at that point had not been built into the budget. And couple that within the column on the right, an estimate of about $100,000 in additional university station growth in FY22. Gives us that other number shown on the bottom um of the rightmost column, 925,000 in university station uh revenue. Uh, I separate that out because typically the board discusses that before we apply that into the budget. So our main revenue source dictated by Prop 2 and 1/2, we know the components. Um, we estimate the new growth, these couple of items at the top here at FY22, but other than that, this is a very uh formula driven uh projection. Uh, so looking at our overall revenue for FY22, first again with taxes because it's our main source. The levy that we just went through, that formula lets us increase taxes as we look at the budget by 2.5 million dollars. So that includes the growth of 2 and 1/2% and an estimate of new growth of 450,000. Uh, as I said, there'd be an additional 925,000 of university station uh tax revenue not yet built into the budget for the board to consider. Looking at the next bullet for state aid, uh again, the state has not even finalized the 21 budget. So they're a long way away from looking at the FY22 budget. Typically, the governor comes out with the initial projection there at the end of January. Uh, we are proposing that we start out our budget by assuming we might have a 20% reduction in state aid. But that might be the utmost, the outermost limit that we would see in reduction, and that would be about 1.3 million dollars. If we assumed that and then right at the start of the budget process, max, match that with use of our stabilization fund of 1.3 million, that would give people some comfort that the budgets they're looking at could absorb a reduction in state aid. Uh, again, I would consider the 20% an outermost reduction. Um, so if we showed that and showed the replacement with the stabilization, we could then adjust that as we get updated information on state aid. So if that were to come down, we would pull down what we were using from the stabilization fund. And just to give it a guideline, uh if we used 1.3 million in stabilization, our current balance in that account is about 3.5 million dollars. Our next category of revenue, local receipts, and that's the major item in that account is the motor vehicle excise. We are able to level fund that budget for FY22. We don't need to reduce that. Uh, but we're not at a point that we could increase that either. We would level fund from the current years um estimates. Uh, our free cash certified balance, 6.1 million, and we did go through that with you at a previous meeting. That's right in line with what our balance has been uh in the last couple of years. Um, that will let us do similar pieces for capital that were done uh over the last couple of years. Particularly 2.4 million dollars for the base school and municipal capital. 125,000 uh if we wanted to put additional funding into the stabilization as we've been doing. And then there would be additional amounts available for capital beyond the base, as been done in the last couple of years. Um, our, our certified balance allows us to continue with that same process. Uh, finally, looking at the meal and hotels fund, uh again, we went through this at a prior meeting. Certainly that revenue is uh in a fluctuating uh situation within fiscal 21. Uh, the most important thing for the town is that we're not relying on that revenue for our ongoing operating budget. It goes into a separate restricted account. Uh, so it's not built into our budget. We don't have to adjust our operating budget for that funding. We're certainly seeing some decreases over prior year uh because of the COVID impact. A reminder that we did not use any of that funding at the June 2020 uh town meeting. There had been initially some proposed. We did not use anything from that fund. Um, the current balance in that account is 1.9 million dollars. Uh, so even if there was continuing fluctuation for the rest of FY21, uh there's currently 1.9 million and that could be available for the board's use for uh capital projects.
Could I just ask um the chair if we can put a placeholder on page seven and go back to it and hear the rest? And then go back.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, but I, I have some questions too, but I was going to wait till the end. So yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to ask as you go or?
Pam, Pam, I guess, I guess um the 925,000, we, we levy the tax and we collect it. And the question is what to do with it?
Uh, so we look at, we could have levied more. Uh, the money came in from university station, uh but where we didn't use that full amount, it meant we were able to kind of balance the budget um without going to our maximum levy. So in other years, when you have that situation, we look at, is there anything you need to do with that money? Are there any direct service costs coming from the university station revenue? In some years, you have been able to say, we're not going to apply that funding into the budget, the capacity, truly the capacity.
Um. I guess in prior years, though, we have applied 500,000 to lower the tax bills.
Uh, well, the university station money in some years uh in FY20, uh we applied 500,000 to public safety funding. Um, some year, there was other years where there was additional um school and municipal impact. Uh, we applied some of the funding to the police station debt service. Uh, so it's really just a component of our 2 and 1/2 levy, um but typically we discuss that uh before automatically showing that within our budget process.
Also, do you want to wait till the end?
I think I do. I'd rather hear the whole thing, but I just had a few things on this page.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Um, then looking at um what happens to our fixed cost budget for FY22. So um we have a category of budgets. Um, this shows in the current year, this total category, 17.6 million dollars. About 18% of our operating budget spent on these categories, with really the bulk of that 14.6 million on our employee benefit cost. Primarily our pension, our health insurance, payroll taxes, you know, workers' comp, unemployment comp, all of those. Um, we have some uh reserve accounts are in here. If we call in FY21, we moved our trash services budget to this category. Uh, so in total, 17.6 million of kind of those overhead fixed costs uh that we have to handle. We do show down in the bottom that of the benefits cost of 14.6 million, about 8.1 million of that is from school employees and 6.5 from municipal employees. And that really reflects the breakdown in uh the number of employees in each area. So we look, when we do the FY22 budget, what happens to that category? And it's an early estimate. We're certainly very early in the process. And right now we're looking at that that overall category would have about almost a 7% increase um to our projections at a cost of 1.2 million dollars total. So the bullets show you by category, some of those increases. One is our pension assessment, currently 5.7 million. Our, that's our Norfolk County retirement pension assessment. They have given us an early estimate of 10%. Uh, we will update that as we go forward and we would hope to see that come down a bit. I believe last year the number was 7%. Uh, but at a 10% increase, that would uh cost $578,000 increase to our budget. Next is our health insurance. Um, our cost in the current year, 6.5 million. Uh, we're currently using an increase of 5%. Again, estimate only at this point. That increase would be about 325,000. Some of the other costs that I mentioned, the payroll taxes, insurance, et cetera, a 5% increase, 152,000 dollar cost. Our open appropriation, we're continuing on that schedule of increasing by $25,000 a year. And then finally, the trash budget, current 1.5 million, the early estimate, 10% increase, 153,000. So we're showing that this bucket in total um would, for us to carry forward these um increases and assessments into FY22 would cost about 1.2 million dollars. Again, early in the process, we revise these as we move forward. And we'll just point out on the bottom here that the health insurance were part of GIC. They usually meet in a February meeting to update on any changes to plans. We usually get the actual rates in March. Uh, so we update the budget at that point. Uh, so again, we're currently estimating 5%. That was our estimate last year and that is what the increase ended up being, uh but we really don't know that until um almost February, March period. Uh, and then looking at the operating budget. So the largest area of our overall spending is the school and municipal uh annual operating budget where they're providing services to the community. So that pie chart shows for FY21, the current year with the operating budget in blue. So it's where we spend almost 70% um of our overall funding um is the one-year budgets for school and municipal departments. So we just want to point out, how does that change year to year? And just to give some general parameters. Uh, each 1% increase to that budget would cost us almost $700,000, 696,000. And that's based on our school budget categories of 48.5 million. So 1% is about 480,000. The municipal budget is 21 million. So the 10, uh 1% increase just over uh 210,000. Uh, and again, we're lined up at the bottom here, just a general estimate uh of what those budgets cost for each percent of change. Two and 1/2% increase, 1.74 million to 3%, about a 2 million, 4%, 2.78. So again, the largest area of our overall spending and really the change in these budgets is what drives the change in our overall uh budget projections. So when we look kind of just overall, looking at the projections, where would we be? So I mentioned that fixed cost category would be about a 1.2 million dollar increase. We also have some fixed cost obligations within the operating budgets, within the school and municipal budgets. And those would be for any contractual obligations that we have um for salaries with employees. So if there are contracts in place for a COLA adjustment, a general COLA increase or for contractual step or other kind of level or other increases within the contract. Uh, those would be fixed obligations that we would need to look at first. Don't have a number for you tonight on that, uh but we would be getting that within the next week or two as we move forward in the budget process. And then looking at the revenue on the bottom, as I mentioned, really if we're not anticipating a change in state aid or a change in our local receipts, we're really looking at the tax levy as what's available in change in revenue. Uh, as I mentioned, under the Prop 2 and 1/2 formula, about 2.5 million dollars. And then kind of the unused levy from prior years, about 925,000 dollars. So those are really the overall big pieces um of projections to the budgets. Just want to show quickly on the operating budget. This slide just shows the history of change in the school and municipal budgets. The table at the bottom, in the most recent years, we've been in the 3 to 3 and 1/2% increase for those budgets. Uh, we've tried to indicate that anything beyond that is really um very difficult to fund within our budget restrictions and is really not sustainable. So we've tried to target that the 3% is kind of the maximum sustainable uh growth within those budgets. Uh, on the two columns on the left, in some earlier years, we've gone, when we've gone above that for growth, we've had to use additional university station funding in order to um of, you know, find room for that within our budget process. So we have been more in line with this 3 to 3 and 1/2% um in recent years. Just a quick look at capital. As I mentioned, in recent years, uh we, we've tried for many years to build up what is our base capital. Uh, we were well under target. Um, back in FY11, 12, we were but almost at 1/3 of what our target should be by our financial policies. We have been able to steadily build that over the last couple of years and in most recent years, been much more in line with what our target should be. Uh, in FY21 and FY20, we were at 2.3 million uh for school and municipal. Uh, and we would be able to do that for FY22. So again, that's just our routine capital for replacement of equipment, uh maintenance of our buildings for all of our town and school operations. So the base capital for 2.3 million. We have over the last couple of years um had an additional capital budget article each year above that base. And we've talked in terms of that's what we're trying to get at projects that were either deferred during those years when we were not at our capital or larger kind of community-wide projects that don't fit within that base capital. So this is the article where we've done um some recreation projects, some field work, um some larger uh facility projects. At the most recent town meeting for FY21, we were just over a million dollars in that area, 1.1 million 6,000. Um, we used free cash to do that. In other years in FY20, we did 1.3 million total. We did a We did a combination of free cash and the hotel and mail tax for the funding. So we would, again, we would have free cash allocation if we wanted to look, the board wanted to look at proposing an article again like that. I will point out, there are two items. Some significant pool repairs that really do need to go forward, about three hundred thousand. We deferred at the June town meeting. We also did not bring forth to the June town meeting, but what had been talked about that needs to go forward is the replacement of the turf field in the back of the high school, what sometimes is called the practice field area. And that's about seven hundred and fifty thousand. And there may be additional items that, as we go through the capital budget, fall into this category. But those are two that kind of have been out there looking to get funded in FY twenty-two. Again, just finally, your next several meetings will continue to review these revenue projections, continue to talk about the state budget and any COVID funding. We'll start to bring forth the capital budget articles to the select board to have you look at what are the items being requested and to look at the timing on any of the larger projects being considered. We'll look at the municipal budget, both regular ongoing operations, and then if there are anything new being requested. Again, state aid, I don't think we'll hear anything about FY twenty-two until the governor's budget at the end of January. We look to have a budget typically around that February first timeline. And that's the budget you would typically put out that then we then present to the FINCOM, we're currently scheduled for February ninth, to take the initial budget projections into the FINCOM. We have been in discussions with the FINCOM and their chair, though, pointing out the different items that this year is unusual and that we would look for perhaps a little more flexibility in what material is finalized as we get to that point in February. So that is kind of it, and I'd be happy to go back or answer any of the questions that you had.
Nancy, you want to start?
Sure, Pam, can you take the slide back to slide seven? Yeah, that's it. That's it. No, no, no. The next one. Yep, that one. So observations that I have and leading up to a request. So under state aid, we don't know what's being planned. You said you think the worst case is a twenty percent reduction. Are you getting indication of that from the state? Or how are you formulating that as the worst case?
No, honestly, there's not any real indication yet. Typically, in years where the states had large budget problems, and we haven't seen that for several years, that has been the maximum amount that we've seen. So it's just really more of a intuitive thought that perhaps we would not see anything larger than that. I think the state was pretty clear in what they did for FY twenty-one to commit to level funding. Certainly, that would be their goal for twenty-two. I think they're just too early in the process to talk about that yet. We talked before about how the state is looking for some relief from the federal government, that some of the different funding that they've gotten could be used for revenue replacement. And I think that that would help the state in what they could do for communities, both later in FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two. So it's not based on anything specific yet, and I don't think we'll have anything specific, at least until after the new year.
Right. And I, I believe I heard in news reports that the the shortfall of revenue at the state level for FY twenty-one is somewhere in the three billion dollar plus range. And that the budget is being built on some one-time resource grabs out of different buckets of money. I don't know what that's comprised of, so that doesn't bode well for what we're looking at for FY twenty-two. If one-time money is helping close the budget gap.
Yes, they are definitely pulling money out of their reserve account or stabilization fund.
Yeah, so in looking at this, I hadn't noticed it in reading it before the meeting, but I'm, I think the idea of covering the state aid with the stabilization fund, I think we should separate those thoughts out for now. What I, what I think I'm heading towards is a request to do some sensitivity analysis. So here's, here's the revenue scenario one. And here's scenario two, and you play with state aid being a full twenty percent drop or a ten percent drop or a five percent drop or a thirty percent drop. I mean, just running sensitivities. And we look at that because I don't want us to get comfortable with the idea at this point that we're going to tap into the stabilization fund. I think that's something that we, when we look at what the potential change in revenue is, then we start talking about what are our options? And we can align those and say, well, we may want to look at using the stabilization fund, but I think we have to look at things like COLA increases. Not doing it versus a one percent versus a two percent. I think we have to, I think we have to really exercise these revenue assumptions with a lot of sensitivity work and then look at what our options are because some scenarios could be very grim. And I think we have to be realistic as we build this budget to take that into consideration. And I would say, if we ever get to the point of proposing the use of any stabilization fund money, then we will need to drop the allocation of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to the stabilization fund. And we would have a net. So instead of doing that, we would just pull it out and it would be a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars less of what we use. So that's just an observation. So that's part one. Can we go to page eleven? And I guess I touched on it already, you know, as I.
Just to make, sorry.
Yes, yes, this is it. As I have always thought about our budgets, there are expenses that are legally, we're legally responsible for. There are some that are financially driven to maintain the health of the town and our bond rating. And there are some that are contractually driven and contracts, and we have to look through those. What, where do we have flexibility in our contracts? Are they all up for renewal or some fixed or whatever? I think we need to look at those and look at sensitivities there. And the COLA, I already mentioned before, is something we need to look at. So when we are out talking to people about the budget, there are these categories of budgeting that drive what we ultimately recommend. And there are consequences when we change and make decisions that are not typical of past history. And I know people are asking questions at town meeting and in meetings since about, is this the right time to be doing this or that? And I think we have to be expressing our budget proposal in, in categories that break it down and say legal obligations, contractual obligations, et cetera. So I think the detail we're going to have to go into this year is going to be different than in the previous few years where we've had a lot of new growth and we've been able to expand our police and fire departments in accordance with projections and revenue from university station and everything. This is going to be a very challenging year, and I think we have to sort of fasten our seat belts and, and look at it that way. So those are my observations and a request that I think we need to build some sensitivity analyses around the big assumptions that we're making now and look at various scenarios and actually play them out on different options. And then we can start eliminating those that seem to be too extreme and, and start building that way in our analysis going forward. So that would be my request.
Nancy, I'll just share with you that very similar to your observations were conversations we had at budget steering. And there's a couple of things. I mean, you know, when we talk about two point five million dollars in increased revenue from taxes, when you back out of that, what's, you know, contractual obligations or fixed costs, you're talking about a very small amount of money.
That's right.
Programming for residents. And I do think, I think sensitivity is a good word, but I think that's becoming more and more highlighted. It's, it's a Westwood challenge. I think it's a suburban, you know, funding mechanism challenge. But so that, that was, that was part of our discussion.
Good.
And there was something else you said that we had talked about. Oh, so thank you for that. That was very similar to our discussion. Pam, I had one question on GIC. Is the GIC increase just a blanket increase to all that participate, or do they look at our utilization?
I think I'm back one slide on the note. They, no, they, while they are looking at the large pool.
Yeah.
And when they determine what the change in each plan will be, they're looking at utilization as a group, not Westwood-specific. And then the rates are set. So we don't get different rates than another community. We're in a pool.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think any, I think that, Pam, that's great. This is my second time seeing this, so I'm trying to remember what we saw tonight, what we talked about earlier. But Pam, this is great. So our next step from here, I know my other thought was Nancy, I'm sorry. You know, Nancy, you talked about a potential, you know, reduction in state aid and modeling those out. I mean, what we've also talked about, Pam and I, is not only state aid, but none of us know where the economy is going. We could be talking about slowed revenue project, collections and things like that. So I mean, all of that's kind of in play here.
Yeah, we've been fortunate that our revenue collections have been strong. But don't confuse collection with what we tax. If people become delinquent, there, there are ways of going, but it doesn't change our revenue. You know, it's cash collection is different than revenue charged. But it's, there are a lot of challenging things going on. You're correct.
Yeah, my next one request, you don't mind? Sorry. Pam, when we, when we do our revenue chart by chart, is it possible on the taxes to just break it down from residential versus commercial? You know, and that big giant.
And the big chart, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I just think sometimes it'd be helpful for, you know, the residents to be able to see it when it comes in, you know. On the pie charts, yes.
Just chart here.
Yeah.
You're saying, show that blue right there, commercial, residential. Yes, I can do that.
If it's blue striped or whatever, it might just to show the.
So Pam, you, your, your next step then with us, you won't be back for the December twenty-first meeting?
I'd like to come in and just do a little piece with you on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just to kind of keep getting direction and moving forward.
Yeah, okay.
I, I do think we have to be straight up with department heads and the school department that don't expect this to be an easy ride through the budget season. And I, I'm gathering, John, that that's what was discussed today. I, I think we've got significant challenges in front of us.
No, I agree, Nancy. I think, you know, I, I think what we talked about today is less, less is more this year.
Yeah.
You know, we did just a very early vetting of some capital projects. What you saw tonight is really what we talked about. I don't foresee a long list this year. But yeah, no, that was the theme, and I think everybody's got that message. So all right, with that, are we good to move on? You don't need any action from us, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Okay, so the next agenda item is to open the twenty twenty-one annual town meeting warrant.
John, I think you should just comment on what people should do if they are petitioners. I think that's very important to remind the public.
Chris, do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, it's, it's right in the section. I'll read it since.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, when we updated the town charter, we actually built into the charter information about this. But if, if anybody is planning to do any petitioner articles, they are strongly encouraged to present and review a draft of the language with the finance commission, select board member and or town council. Because if they come in in a form that can't be acted on, it fails on that, not on the merits. And so the form and the function of petitioner articles is very important. And I, I think the best person to go to, in my opinion, is town council. But to preview it and get guidance is very important. It's not, it's nothing more than a supportive role that going to these people would, you know, they would perform. It's, it's just that if it comes in in the wrong way and it can't be acted on, then it's no good, right at the, right out of the gate.
And Nancy, can I just say that, you know, in the past, people have put the petitioner articles forward and go out and get, you know, forty, fifty signatures, and they don't require all of that need in order to then go back and amend it and change it with the right language. Now they're stuck because they get all fifty or fifty, you know, forty or fifty people have signed it to now go change it. So I would advise that if there's a petitioner article, that you're not getting more than the required signatures and maybe someone they can always get in touch with if there's, if there's language that needs to be changed.
Pam, do you want to add anything about the process and people reaching out to you? You're on mute. You're on mute.
Still on mute.
Mr. Walsh is correct. If you get forty or fifty signatures and you draft it wrong, and you got to go back and get those forty, fifty signatures. Get a few extra just to make sure they're all good signatures. But you don't, you don't need to get two hundred signatures to get it on the warrant. And if you need to amend it, you can amend it with fewer signatures if you have to. And contact me if you have questions about what you want to draft. I'll help you draft something that I, that will pass constitutional muster.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, so I move that we open the town meeting warrant for the twenty twenty-one annual town meeting. And we are indicating a plan to close the warrant at our first meeting in January, which I believe is scheduled for January eleventh.
It is.
I will second.
Hey, with that, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Dr. Walsh?
Aye.
My vote aye as well. Thank you. Tish, do you want to talk to the future select board dates?
Okay, so in your packet, there are some proposed dates for January through June of two thousand twenty-one. So I don't know if you want to go out just a few months, maybe January, February, March? Or do you want to go further?
You know, my, my experience, I mean, Nancy and Michael, I appreciate any feedback. I, I think that in March with town meeting looming, and we have a potential very large project going to town meeting, I, I find that we almost need some ad hoc meetings. And so I, I had thought we'd just go out to March and then schedule from there through town meeting. But I'm really fine either way. I don't have any travel plans. I just hate putting them on the calendar, then they don't become realistic.
I think these are pretty good, though, because they're tied to finance and warrant commission meetings. And we often meet prior to those, either to prepare for them or to take action that they need, the finance and warrant commission needs to know. And then come April, that part of the process is done, so we're on regular meetings. So I think this looks like a very doable schedule.
And you have an advantage this year that you don't have in other years in that we meet at five o'clock, the FINCOM doesn't meet till seven. So you can, in theory, have a full meeting before the finance.
Right, right, right.
Commission and then go into that meeting. So that might help make it more streamlined for you.
Okay. Michael, you good with the as presented?
Well, I'm like, I'm like you, John. I don't have any, I don't have any plans to go away until April, so.
Well, it was brought to my attention today for one of the meetings in January that I originally had set for January twenty-fifth, but FINCOM is on January twenty-sixth.
So why don't we just meet, why don't we meet at five PM on the twenty-sixth?
So you want to continue with five PM, or do you want to discuss whether our meetings going forward, the exception of before FINCOM, will be later than five?
Oh, because we typically only meet for a half hour.
Five works, and then we can have a quick dinner break if we.
Right.
Haven't.
So in January, if you January eleventh, where you would close the warrant? And then again, on January twenty-sixth at five PM prior to FINCOM.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I, I believe the FINCOM's meeting at six.
Okay, that's fine too, though. Are they going to meet virtually?
Yes.
Okay, oh, okay.
So we're fine with the dates in February then, for February first and then February twenty-second?
Yeah, okay.
And Peter just confirmed that in.
Yeah, that's, okay. So 5:00, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, so I'm fine with them.
You're fine going forward with what is proposed?
Yes, Michael, Nancy.
Yeah, as, as amended.
Yeah.
Just the 25th becoming the 26th.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. We don't need a vote, right? No, okay. Okay, moving on. So Tish, you'll send out that final list to us.
I will. I, we only went out through March though, right? We're going to discuss April and May further, or?
I would keep them on.
Yeah.
One conflict in April then with one select board member that is unable to meet on the 19th, which is, was a proposed date. So the question is, do you meet either on the night of the election or the next week on the 28th potentially, at the day after the town election?
Um, how about just leave that date off for now?
Yeah.
And then we'll resolve it later.
Isn't that vacation week, to the extent there's vacation week schedule anyway?
Yeah.
That's actually Patriots.
Yeah, so we usually don't meet then anyway. But yeah, we will have to see where we are, I guess that's right.
Okay. All right, so fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, all right, the comprehensive plan. We can't talk about the comprehensive plan without mentioning, this has been an incredible amount of work from a lot of people. Abby, are you here to talk about the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Thank you for all of your work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So you're looking tonight for the letter of support? So you need?
Yeah. Yes, if, if you're ready, um, if you want me to just summarize a little bit, um, where we are in the process.
Sure.
Um, since the steering committee, um, I think Jack Wigan, um, was before you, is, um, the end of October. The planning board, um, has since then, they held their first public hearing on November 17th. And then, um, and they had a, the steering committee was present and did a full presentation. They went over that in detail. Um, ultimately, they continued their public hearing to December 1st. So last week, the, um, planning board held their second public hearing. Um, and then they did, at the end of the night, continue their public hearing until their meeting next week on Tuesday, December 15th. Um, the draft that you have is revised through December 2nd. And we believe, um, that includes and incorporates all the comments from the planning board, from the planning board members and all the comments we received, um, through the conclusion of, uh, last week's public hearing. So we believe this, um, updated draft, you have a redlined version. We believe that incorporates all the comments we've received to date in the planning board and the steering committee. Um, we're looking, um, to you to see if you have any final, um, edits or comments or recommendations, and hoping for a letter of support from the select board so that they can, um, continue and possibly complete their review next week on the 15th.
Thanks a lot. I, I think at this point, the plan has incorporated the edits that the select board provided, both individually. My understanding, so I, I don't, so you're looking for a letter of support from us? Ideally, and there's one drafted.
No, we don't have a letter drafted, do we?
No, I thought, I thought there was one.
No, I, I sent it to you, John, but I haven't sent it off to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought the group had seen it. Okay, okay, okay. So, um, and the hearing is the 15th, we will not be meeting before the 15th. Okay, so I'll finalize that letter, and then Chris can send it individually to, to you, Nancy, and to Michael. Does that work? And then, okay, he could just work individually with us.
If I can just say, I, um, I want to express my appreciation for having, whoever it did, maybe you, Abby, going through, um, a lot of detailed comments I had. And, um, and having read it in totality again, it is a much stronger document. And a lot of the, sort of the dated types of things that had to be updated to reflect COVID or, or evolution of things in Islington Center, you captured, um, that so that it is so much stronger now. And, um, I really want to express my appreciation for that. I think John already did, but I mean, I just, I, I could tell there was a lot of work that's gone in in the past month, on top of all the work that preceded it.
Yeah, every time you read it, I mean, it's just evident, the, the, the volume of work and the amount of time that it took, it's really impressive.
Yeah, and I don't know when, I haven't seen the draft, John, but I think it's important to, for us to say that this is a guiding document. It is not in any way, um, I don't want, I don't want to be negative about it, but it, it is a guiding document, and a lot of work would still follow in pursuit of these goals. And I think as the document itself reads, it speaks to, um, the goals is not considering resources or personnel or whatever. There's just so much that goes into it. And I think we should echo that because I think it's very important that people not use it against us as a town, but that it be a, a launching pad for more work because so much has been accomplished since the original document. And it doesn't constrain us, nor does it, um, dictate what we do. Because we can do more than the plan says or other things in the plan. Um, but, you know, there won't be lightning striking the town if we don't do some of the things. It's really aspirational. And it reflects the work of, of a lot of people. But times will change and will evolve as a town, and things may also evolve as it relates to the plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's interesting when you go back and you look at the last one that was done to see, you know, where we've come and, and, uh, how to try to plan for the future so I can get enough, a lot of work. You can see there are competing interests in town, which are always interesting to be resolved at some point. But, uh, it's a great outline for our town boards, whether elected or appointed, to try to enhance the town as we move forward. Nice job, Abby, I know it was a ton of work for you.
All right, so Abby, I will work with Chris, and we will work on that letter.
Okay. Great.
And we will make sure we have something filed for the 15th.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Well done.
Okay, we'll move on. Uh, we're on to approval of minutes for October 26th and November 23rd. Any concerns with those minutes?
I have a knit of an edit, a nitpicking edit that I just want to capture. It's just a word, uh, page two of six. Under Veterans Day, the ceremony will be held in accordance with social distance guidelines, not in accordance to.
Okay.
Thank you. Otherwise, I am fine with these.
Okay, John.
Okay, I move approval of the regular meeting minutes from October 26th, 2020.
I'll second.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. November 23rd?
You're fine.
Fine, okay.
I move approval of the November 23rd regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, Tish, for preparing us.
I, I think you are not at the.
I'm present.
November 23rd?
November 23rd, yeah.
I'm sorry. You're correct. So I, I'll abstain. Thank you for catching that.
You're welcome.
Let's go.
I didn't realize we were so caught up on minutes.
Isn't that nice?
This has become Tish's new thing to make sure she's right on top.
You're right, that was Thanksgiving week.
Another well done.
Okay, um, we have some attendees. Are there any questions from the public or press? I'm seeing none. Connor?
No, the only questions were related to the FinCom discussion earlier.
Mr. Lentz, and we got those.
Beyond that, I have not seen anything.
Okay, at this time, the board will be going into executive session to discuss two issues. One is pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to ongoing litigation. And the second is pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, to discuss strategy with respect to the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, both of which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if discussion were in open session. The board will be returning to open session. We have a motion to enter executive session.
I'll so move for the aforementioned reasons.
I will second.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Walsh?
Aye.
Okay, we will be returning, uh, at some point later this evening. Okay. This is the Westwood Select Board. It is December 7th, 2020, returning to regular session from, uh, executive session. We had a discussion relative to litigation, um, concerning the development of the Amazon distribution site. There'll be no further action taken on this matter tonight. However, there is a chance that we will be meeting, uh, prior to the 21st if we can, in fact, reach agreement, uh, as part of that litigation. Um, if not, we expect we will be discussing it again on the 21st. Should we hold a meeting prior to the 21st? We will, of course, meet all, um, necessary posting requirements. I think that's it for an update on that matter, and that would conclude our agenda. Any questions, thoughts? Okay, I think we can take a motion to adjourn.
Can we move then?
Do you want to mention the next meetings, John?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. We will be meeting on Monday, December 21st at 5:00 PM via Zoom.
You mentioned you'll also be attending the school committee meeting on the 14th.
I'm sorry, was that in here?
Yeah.
So there will be a meeting, a joint meeting of the select board, the school committee, and the Finance and Warrant Commission on December 14th. Just next Monday, and we have a regularly scheduled meeting for December 21st. I think we're good.
Okay, I move that, uh, we adjourn.
I'll second. Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.